Okay, we'll begin our work session. I asked Cheryl Jones to come and give us her report.
Can you move up closer?
We'll start with you, just where you're comfortable.
Okay. So, we have tried unsuccessfully to get several contractors to come out and work on the surgical suite. One gave us an estimate, but then didn't respond to doing the work. J.K. Johnson was supposed to come out last week to look at it and give us their estimate, but they've been tied up with a job at TBA. Whipple Construction is going to come out today to give us the estimate and a start date that they could start doing the work. So, we are relocating the employee who has that office in preparation, since we have somebody who apparently will actually give us a start date to make those renovations. The other thing that I have worked on, and of course, I'm in talks with a vet who I think will come to work for us to see how it's going to go. Mississippi State, it's the end of the year, their graduates who have finished internships would be available to apply for the job, so I have an account open with Mississippi State to post our job. But I didn't want to hire a vet until we actually had a place for them to do the majority of the work that they would need to do. Meanwhile, there is a gentleman that started the Huntsville Spay Neuter Clinic that I am in talks with about a spay neuter clinic out here in Lauderdale County. We will set up a nonprofit board and a separate foundation to run the spay neuter clinic, but it would give us, as well as the public, access to more affordable spay neuter. And hopefully, by doing that, we could help, you know, the citizens that want to get their pet fixed, which we know there are a lot that do, but they may not be able to pay $200, that's the going common rate, and may not be able to wait several months, which is also what we're finding is the waiting list for it. So, I have that project in the works too, because I think that it would bring a lot of people to Lauderdale County who would spend the day shopping, hanging out, doing stuff, and, you know, give our citizens, as well as the counties surrounding us, access to affordable spay neuter. So, it would be a win-win for all of us. Colbert County would be interested, because they too have a real struggle with getting appointments for spay neuter. So, other than that, that's what we're currently working on. Do you have any specific questions about those?
There's a contractor that's scheduled today, but he hasn't got there today yet.
He wasn't when I left. But I can reach out to him and find out if he is there now or going to come by. But he was at least willing, the problem is, our project is pretty small compared to what everybody's doing. You know, Craig is down the street doing Southwire, and several of the other companies I reached out to generally do bigger jobs than our little, it's like $13,000 was the initial estimate we had to cut a door and put up a wall with a door. And so, you know, if everybody's got bigger jobs and, you know, everybody does stuff with TBA, so trying to get somebody who could squeeze us in. But hopefully, Mr. Whipple will be able to do it, and we can get that going, because that will obviously make things a lot easier for us and cheaper, because everything's more expensive now than it was last year. So, that's hopefully.
If that don't work, I can give you two contacts.
That would be perfect, because I am collecting them. I just need somebody to come and say, I mean, I know it's not a lot, but I just need somebody to come and say, "We'll do it." So, we're moving the employee, so that we'll have, and like I said, we have an agreement with a shelter in Savannah that has surgical equipment that we can use, that they cannot use because they don't have a vet. And so, we're going to trade the grooming tub that we're pulling out of this area, Shoreline Table, which is a company that manufactures most of the equipments that shelters use, and a scale in exchange for them giving us the, also, the ASPCA is big in the spay neuter projects, and so, the gentleman is going to help us make contact with them about some grant money to help outfit our surgical suite with, since spay neuter is something that we need in this area, and we would be able to do it quicker and easier than what we're currently having to do, which is, you know, we go to Mississippi one day, we go to Huntsville the other day, to try to get everybody fixed before they leave the building. And it's getting to be a struggle, obviously.
Yes. Wait on, okay. Anybody?
I want to press Mr. Kim, do we still get several animals out of the county?
Not typically, no. We had a gentleman show up two Saturdays ago with a kitten that he said he found, and it turned out, he was not from our area. And he created quite a scene in the parking lot and didn't want to give us his information. But no, most people call us ahead of time, and we tell them, we are absolutely at capacity with Florence and Lauderdale County, and we give them resources that they can use to try to find, you know, a solution for the animal. The problem is, we are one of a few shelters that actually have a shelter, counties that have a shelter. So, you know, above us in Tennessee doesn't have anything. Lawrence County doesn't have anything, Franklin County. So, we get a lot of calls from people, but we direct them to other resources. Problem is, everybody's full, so, you know, there's just not much that we can offer people. We have a rehome page that we started, so people can post their own animal. We invite them to our adoption events if they want to bring their animal to try to find it a home. But we tell them that we are limited to what we can do to what we get in Lauderdale County and what we get from the city of Florence.
I think I understood you say that when, when, and we get set up with a vet, the other counties or other facilities will, they'll reimburse us, they'll pay us for their.
Well, they'll be interested in making some donations into the startup of a spay neuter clinic. Sunshine Mills, Tiffin Motor Homes, they struggle, as everybody does, with, you know, not a lot of vets to be able to accommodate spay neuter. Colbert County Commission is definitely interested, because they want to put some money into spay neuter, not to mention with, you know, Joe Anderson that's really big into spay neuter. So, when Huntsville started theirs, they got half of the money from donations, and ASPCA and PetSmart Charities and Petco Foundation were big donors, and then they had some business donors, and then they just did some fundraisers, which is, you know, what the foundation that runs the spay neuter clinic would do. So, you know, over 90% of the animals that come into our shelter have had no vetting at all. And if we could change that, it would really help for us on the budget end of not having to do everything from breeding vaccines and spay neuter before we adopted animals out. And contrary to what, you know, is being said, we adopt more animals locally than we send to rescue. The whole rescue thing hardly exists anymore. Everybody's full, nobody's got room for anything. The shelters and rescues are like, it's just, it's not that intakes are more than they used to be, it's that outcomes have dried up. You know, here in Florence, we have several apartment complexes that have now said you can't have a pet, and they've given people, to the end of their lease, to decide if they're going to move or get rid of their pet. And so, you know, UNA took over some apartment complexes, people had pets, they have to move, pet deposits can be as much as $1,000 for one pet, and, you know, in these economic times, people can't always do that, so they're coming to us.
Okay, so you say that, or I think that when we do have our own vet, that he or she will stay pretty busy.
They'll stay very busy, very busy for us, yeah, because we typically get, we inherited three animals from the emergency vet that people went to get help for and couldn't, so they left the pet there. And, you know, access to veterinary care is an issue nationally that shelters are dealing with, because if someone can't afford their pet, they only have two options. Either you don't get a care, or you surrender it to a shelter. And we're an open admission shelter, we take whatever people give us from Lauderdale County and the city of Florence. And so, we get our fair share of animals with illnesses here lately. And, you know, we have a minor dust-up with volunteers who think that we should be able to do everything without any limitations. And, you know, we don't, we can't within our budget do that, we have to make choices, and volunteers don't like that, and I understand that. We enjoyed a 2% euthanasia rate since we moved into this building. This year, we're sitting at 7%. You're allowed to be called a no-kill shelter if you euthanize less than 10% of your annual intake, and our annual intake was 5,000, and then it trickled down, but this year, it's going to, it's going to go back up probably closer to that. But we will probably slide out of the 10% this year, because, you know, we get inspected by the state for our euthanasia license, and they have told us that we cannot hold over a certain capacity. And so, when you can't hold over a certain capacity, you have to make choices, and I understand, we've all been volunteers, and it's a horrible decision to make, but, I mean, we have to make choices, and it really is awful if you have to decide that this is a dog we can't help versus, you know, we can help this one. And so, we also don't hide animals, we have plenty of cute little animals that have gone to homes. I could show you the picture of the cutest chihuahua you have ever seen, that's mean as a snake, but we found a home for him locally, and he loves that lady, and he has a little chihuahua friend that matches him. So, you know, it's rough, it's a rough time to be in sheltering. People come to work for us, and they think it's going to be hugging puppies and kittens all day long, and it's dirty, hard work, constant cleaning, parvo is everywhere, and we are, we get dogs in every week that have been exposed to it, and trying to manage that in a shelter population is really, really rough. And so, you know, we have to make choices.
I understand, and I know that's a, that's a challenge, I understand that, but I have not heard any bad things, y'all have heard, it's been good things.
We appreciate that.
About the shelter, so appreciate what you do, what your staff does.
Thank you very much. We are really enjoying doing animal control in the county, we have met some wonderful people, and today, we're picking up a dog for a gentleman that was on a bike quarantine to go to the vet to get cleared from the bike quarantine. We have really enjoyed doing it, because we've been able to meet a lot of really great people. And so, when people say that we don't have great people around here, we have a lot of great people around here, we really do.
You still sending several out of state, right?
We send, we send less than we adopt, we only have really one rescue partner that we work with. They have taken three of our handicap dogs in wheelchairs, and a really mangy dog that was surrendered to us. But, you know, they're limited to what they can do too, because everybody just having a hard time moving dogs. When everything gets so expensive, you know, people have to make choices, and, you know, caring for animals is a, can be an expensive proposition, yeah.
That's all I can share.
Cheryl, since the county's going to pay for the remodel, wouldn't it be, wouldn't it be better to charge out a county a certain fee?
They, they pay the same fee that, I mean, everybody pays an adoption fee, whether they.
Oh, I'm talking about on using the vet.
Oh, yeah, well, if we can do that, the vet board will have restrictions on what we can do. They allow us to treat our animals, but they don't allow us to treat public animals unless we can get some legislation changed at the state level, and because of the recent dog maulings, there are a couple of legislators who want to open up some conversations about that, addressing that.
I knew you mentioned different things.
Yes, yes.
I was thinking more, I mean, we're not needing donations from them to do the work.
Right.
Since the commission's doing it.
Right, right. So.
I mean, that's fine, I mean, we would be glad if somebody else wanted to pay for it, but where I'm coming from is not thinking, somebody else paid for the work, so we won't charge them to neuters.
Oh, yeah, absolutely, absolutely. I'm hoping that we can get the vet board to relax a little bit on letting us do some community services, because all the shelters that are in states where you're allowed to do that, see a lot of positive, you know, feedback from the community and positive interactions with the community. I mean, if we have our own vet, we can do a vaccine clinic, which we will, to try to help people understand why you need to get your animal vaccinated. And PetSmart Charities has a program where they will pay for the vaccines for you, and then pay you a stipend for everyone that you give. So, they'll give us all the materials, and they'll pay us $3 per vaccine, because they realize that right now, getting animals in the community vaccinated is the most important thing, so that if they come into shelters, they've at least had a baseline, because this is like a bad year of the flu with parvo. It's a strain that the vets haven't seen, it affects older dogs, which it didn't used to do years ago, so getting dogs vaccinated will really help us manage the populations that are coming in.
Just to, I'd just like to say, to Cheryl personally, how much I applaud you and your staff for all of y'all to do it. I also, as Mr. Parker said, I'm hearing really good things from the folks out in the county. So, thank you, and thank y'all, all of y'all for what you do.
Well, thank you, we are enjoying doing it.
Well, thank y'all for coming.
Thank you.
Appreciate that.
Absolutely.
Okay, John?
I don't have any. Okay, that's fair.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman, just some quick updates tonight. We, tomorrow, we got the demo on the new rotor flamer, but we're excited about that. We've got, spent a lot of work to get all that set up, and we've got it, the machine will be here at 7:00 in the morning. We've got a tanker of cement coming from, well, actually, the truck itself is coming from Evergreen, Alabama, and cement's coming from on the other side of Birmingham. So, we've got a full tanker coming tomorrow to be here at 9:00, and so, we're going to do, that'll give us two hours to get to the machine, just got to get organized on that, then we'll get the cement here, and so, we'll go from there. So, we kind of got this set up tomorrow as a one-time thing, this cement company of Evergreen, that's not a very practical solution for the long term, but it's enough to get us, we wanted everybody on site for tomorrow, so that we can see the machine with cement, so that way, it's all, it's all together. And so, we, I like to make sure we get that demo in a real-world scenario, and so, we'll have that tomorrow. The challenge of that tomorrow is going to be figuring out how we get cement, and so, we're talking to lots of folks in this business, looking at all the different options, and so, we're working on that, and we'll figure that out. Getting, getting the cement here the best way for us is the next step, so, but we're excited about that.
How's County Road?
533.
533.
It's over there, it's between Anderson and Grassie, in the best directions out there, so y'all are welcome to come if you want to come see it. So, I can, and I'll take some videos and stuff for you, I'll share with you guys, but.
We'll start something here?
Yeah, the machine shows up at 7:00, yeah, and so, we'll be, we'll be going through it at 7:00 and 9:00, so the machine will be, it'll start moving in, so.
Is this the machine that we're actually purchasing?
Yeah, it's a demo machine, and I said, send the one that, send the one that we would buy, and so, but assuming that it's, everything goes as it should, and I mean, I've done so much research on it, I don't expect any surprises, and so, and they're sending, they've got a crew that goes, it's like a tractor equipment specialist for these machines, and so, they're coming in from Georgia or somewhere, so they're the ones that are going to train our guys, and we're going to, we're going to go in and train a couple guys, so that way, we've got some redundancy. And so, we've got all of our water truck and stuff ready, and so, it's, it should be a show, so I'm excited to see it. So, we're really excited, I've been, I've spent a lot of time on the phone with county engineers all over the state with, you know, figuring out stuff that worked, didn't work, and so, we've, we've got a good game plan, and so, I'm excited for it, so. Next thing I got, just to, just kind of let you know, dump trucks, okay? You know, we, we buy and sell dump trucks as we always have, and we've got a new fleet coming in July, those Kenworths are on their way. This last Jane Wood sale was not very good for the truck market, and so, the way I like to describe it is, the truck market came back into orbit two weeks ago, and so, we'd known that was going to happen, we knew that we couldn't, you know, those prices that they've been selling for have just been outrageous. So, we're still in great shape, everything, everything we've got's set in pretty. That September sale they do, that's too close to the election, I don't think, I don't think it's going to be our wisest move to sell there, we'll probably wait, sell later, but just know, we're monitoring closely, those Jane Wood guys, stay in touch with me, and as president of the Engineer Association, they, a lot of times, talk to me first, and then let me talk to the county engineers, and so, they've really been keeping me in tune with what's going on, and no surprises has been the biggest news. Hey, we said, we knew it was going to do this, right, we just didn't know when, and so, we're, we're starting to see some of that, so. So, no action needed, just know that all that's, we know what's going on, we're watching Next thing, paving, Roger Group's got two crews going right now, it's pretty rare for us, they don't usually do that, but they've got a crew going, County Road 110, and on Pine Day and Shores in that area, then they've got another crew that's going to start tomorrow on Goverver Road, so, so we'll be going, so they're, they're really, they're chomping on our heels, because we've still got guys, we've got roads that we're still getting ready, and so, so far, so good. And we're, that West End crew, they're going to do County Road 2 for the next, probably a second this week, and then they'll go up to 100 after that, so, and then 61 as well on Saturday morning, so, so we're, they're covering a lot of ground. So, this, this first check, we write them in July, it'll be pretty substantial.
I got a, this Ricky Graham, if you had anything to add. Who's Ricky Graham? 3520 County Road 91, mentioning us paving over there, we missing his road and wondering if we were going to get it.
He's on County Road 91?
Yeah, 25, oh, 3520 County Road 91.
Yeah, no, not this year.
Not this year.
So, and that's something I was going to mention on the paving, I don't know if y'all are getting them, but I'm getting a lot of what I call these add-on calls, so I've had two today, Rick's been like, hey, we live on this little half-mile road, just off that pave, that road y'all paved, while you're here, you need to go and pave it, and I love that, I think it's a great idea, except half miles turn into whole miles, it turn into 50 miles, and so.
I see a message last night, I want to know what tone it takes.
No, if he's on County Road 91, we've paved all, we're going to pave on 91, so, there's more that could be paved down there, but it's just, it's not in terrible shape, and so, yeah, we are, that's, that's another thing that I'm so excited for this new machine, it's going to help us a ton on these chipso roads that are just so bad that need paved, this is going to buy us a little bit of time sometimes, and so, it's just going to buy us more time, and so, they're still going to have to be paved one day, but it's not something that I think we can, we can really get by a lot of them, so, because like I said, these half-miles, they just add up, so, and I would love to do them, but you know how it is. Last thing I've got is, we've got two interviews this week, and if we hired those two employees, we would be fully staffed, so by the end of the week, we'll have three brush hog crews going. I was in Missouri last week, I almost said brush hog, I tell you, people will rub off on me, I think, we'll have three brush hog crews going by the end of the week, so.
So, that'll help, look at mine.
Yes, that's, thank y'all, thank y'all. And I'll tell you, we got a good round of employees this time too, a lot of people with experience, I actually had a few employees come back, the going to full-time was a really big deal. We had, we had some employees that were good employees that had left, and they didn't really, they said they didn't really want to come back, because they knew they'd have to come in Stanford, and they won't do it, and they found out they could, full-time, they jumped out, so, yeah.
What about 56, are you jumping?
No, it's, we're still.
We paid one, 533, right?
We're still, we're going to have almost $100,000 in repair on that road, just repair before we pave, so, this, that's why, and that machine, and I, if you come out there tomorrow, I'll show you where we go, we're plugging all that, doing it the way we were doing it a month ago, and it's just taking so long, before we have a plan for that road, we'll be able to do it in a week, that new machine.
I know you mentioned Roger Group, when are we going to start using our own machine?
Well, we're, we're using it, well, we're using it on all these digouts. Now, you know, the first road we're going to do is a state line road, but I actually sent somebody up there today, we're going to hit it with the new machine before we pave, so, we're going to double dip up there, so we're going, I'm going to make sure that road gets built up, so, and it'll be, that'll be done for a long time.
Thank you. That'd be a good test road.
Yeah, I do believe.
And it's made, like, it's just perfect for that, because they said it's pretty rough, it just will put it back, we'll get it across that shit back, get it smooth, it'll be strong, well, you pave all of it, it should be there. We're going to, we also, I think Mr. Garner looked at this road, Rocksville Heights, a little subdivision just north of Rocksville, and there's a local dirt contractor that has a dirt pit in the back of it, and they had just annihilated that road, but, I mean, they're just not built for dirt pits, and so, we're going to go in there, run it.
I would compare the traffic usage on State Line Road to Fogle Road.
Wow.
That traffic is unbelievable on that road.
You know, I guess you get all those trailers, and people going up there, those UTVs and all the log trucks too, I mean, I know it really gets.
It's a lot of traffic.
Yeah. Sorry to interrupt.
Just a week.
Thank you.
Thanks, Eric.
Tom?
Only time I have is some agenda to order a bid, and I thought you were going to get this, rebuild the motor truck, so that's all we've got.
You'd like to talk?
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, Tom and I, we had talked about, and I mentioned to Joe earlier, but Tom's going to get an estimate on Iron's Electric, they're going to do some lighting at Rest Creek Park, so you have that ready work session, Tom?
My head's ready right now, I'm new to it. I was just going to, Tom, but y'all looked at, I brought one topic.
Jeff, for the, I would say.
That's for signing two, two provisions.
Yep.
You guys keep a breakdown on doing it all, it's going one time at a time. Now, the, I will say, the lighting for the back is supposed to, the bed's supposed to light, I think, in July, in June, you remember?
Whenever you guys give it to.
I think, I think we just talked about the two provisions, things like July the 3rd, when it's supposed to go out, just to see what, to do that part of the, you know, run the underground, all that stuff, and the back part back there.
Yeah, correct, look at that. Sixteen, I see that, sixteen, six fifty.
That doesn't have to go through a major.
Which provisions is this?
Preferably, could personally go in on the down point.
On the, on the left down there?
Yes, and others at the, at the back house.
Okay, yeah, and that's, is that, that's under contract?
And then?
This is on the 30th.
It's under bid.
It's on the 30th.
That's why I said it doesn't have to be.
Oh, it doesn't have to be, okay.
No, sir.
Okay, I understand, yeah.
Forty, and it's under that.
Yeah. Okay. Anything else, Tom? Okay, great.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, just a couple of updates for the commission. I've got some revised drawings for the 911 center, if anyone wants to see those. I can see that.
I won't see them, no, I don't know if I do.
Do you not know if you do?
I don't know if I do. I want to see.
So, just quickly, how we've kind of shrunk everything down, so currently, all of this area is there, we're not touching any of it, other than paint, tile, and carpet, and some electrical, so the only renovation that's on this floor, main floor, of what will be the 911 center, will be this section, which we're adding to restroom facilities, and then also, if you'll remember, it was found that this building's in a seismic zone, so there's an extra brace that's got to be put, one here and one here, so those braces will get put in. I know Mr. Hackworth is not, doesn't like elevators, but we're going to have to put them in, sorry. It's actually going to be, it's going to be the benefit of everybody, and it's going to be a shaftless elevator, so it won't be any kind of the maintenance or whatnot. So, other than that, in this area, this will be the 911 floor, it'll be raised 18 inches off the ground, so that we can access under it for cabling or any of that. It'll be raised eighteen inches off the ground so that we can access under it for cabling or any of that kind of stuff. And then the generators will go underneath what's currently the drive-through. And so, we'll kind of make all of that work. On the EMA side, the, this building will be, will be EMA, this building will be nine-one-one. So, there'll be no crossover between the two. So, the emergency recovery center will be on the bottom floor. And basically, all we're doing here is getting this out what's already there, not putting anything back in. There's no support braces that I have to worry about. So, the current EOC is about seven hundred square feet. This is just over fifteen hundred square feet. So, we're doubling the size of what that will be, adding a, a restroom facility downstairs. And then where it says office over here, that's actually just a, like a breakout room. So, if we have an operation going in and you gentlemen needed to have a private conversation about something, then that would be the area that you'll go into from there. Then, on the second floor of both of them, there's really very little that's happening, um, in the nine-one-one center. There's a wall that's currently here. We're just kicking that wall out and moving it over to this existing wall. So, one wall gets moved there, then the showers get put, um, for the locker rooms over that current open area over here. And then you've just got the landing for the elevator here. Otherwise, everything else on the second floor stays the same. So, no significant changes up there. On the EMA side, when you come up the stairs, you'll go in and your EMA office staff will be in this general area. We'll have a training and conference room here and then break room, men's, men's restroom, women's restroom. So, very, very easy, very simple. No issues or concerns.
Stairs will stay.
Yes, so the stairs will stay, but the stairs in the nine-one, current nine-one-one side of it are not ADA compliant. They're not wide enough, which is kind of where a lot of them from. Yeah. So, on the exterior, the big thing is, is downstairs will be brick, except it'll have some lights, some natural light that'll come into the nine-one-one center. But all the upstairs windows will stay. They have to be replaced, cause right now it's just single all the way up. So, we've gotta replace them. But you'll have windows on the upstairs part of it will be double painted, um, based on where it's located and the type of storms or events that come, come through. I'm very confident that we're gonna change anything we've got. So, there's no issues. And it'll, it'll be a lot more curb appeal, uh, which I think the city was concerned about. And so, kind of the same thing on this elevation. The interior sections will be closed. So, this is actually looking through to the small building. So, this is under that overhang that separates the two buildings. So, that'll be brick, but you'll have door access there. This is the drive-through. So, part of this will be where all your cable comes through and whatnot. So, the next thing then is figuring out the intended situation. And a meeting with MCA from Huntsville on that, on Thursday, um, kind of get an idea. The original plan, if you'll recall, was to have a hundred and fifty-foot tower there. I just don't think it's necessary. And so, we'll, we'll work something out. I, it makes no sense to me how Florence Police Department can be forty-two feet lower on grade than that building. And their antenna array can pick up everything in the county, but yet I've got a vendor that's telling me that I gotta have another hundred and twenty-five foot on top of that in the middle of downtown. It just, there's some logic that's missing there. So, we'll get moving through with that. Any questions about that at this point?
Is that glass, like tempered glass or like the end of car windshield that kind of stays intact?
Yes, sir. It'll have a film on it. So, it's, what it's called is it's called hurricane-rated glass. So, it can still be penetrated, but instead of, instead of breaking like you would normally think a window would break, it will do like that. It'll have an exterior film on, on both layers of it. And then it'll have gas fill in, in between it. So, anything that hits it, when that gas fill explodes, will push anything away from it. But it'll keep the window from imploding inside. Um, and so, it's reasonably priced and then we shouldn't have any, we shouldn't have any issue with any of that. We're still on track, uh, with hopefully going to bid the beginning of the fall. I met with, um, I met with them again last week. And everything's moving forward. We've got the art, or we've got the electrical engineer lined up. That'll be Jason Lance with Shoals Engineering. And then the HVAC company, or excuse me, the mechanical engineer, Scotty Hardgrove. And he, I don't know what company he's with now. He's out of Decatur. Uh, I've worked on, with him on several projects, so I'm, I'm confident in that. And then ICS has been retained, uh, as a consultant for all of the IT and, and whatnot. And so, um, all that's moving forward. I'm happy with this, to this point. On EMS, just real quickly, um, had our first conference conversation, uh, with Fitch and Associates last week. They sent us a twenty-four page request for information. So, Justin Bishop and I will start going through that. Slade had an employee that was injured yesterday. He's out dealing with that today, uh, not on duty. It was, uh, in his personal, uh, capacity. And so, we'll meet with him later this week and try to get all of that information. My goal is to have everything backed to Fitch and Associates by the end of next week. And then from that point, they'll sket- start scheduling interviews locally with all of the volunteer fire chiefs, um, with law enforcement, uh, with the hospital, um, with city council, with county commission and the mayors of all of the towns and municipalities within the county. And so, they'll start compiling all of that information, um, and getting it back to us, hopefully fairly quickly. We did start our EMD training this week with all of the nine-one-one staff. So, we were fortunate that Calvert County partnered with us at no cost to the county, the city board to nine-one-one to train all of our employees for the emergency medical dispatching. The only thing that is going to, to incur a little bit of cost is as part of this program, once we start, uh, EMD-ing calls, we have to have a medical advisor. And so, right now, the medical director for EMS is named, but nine-one-one doesn't have a medical director. And so, we will have to have a medical director. I don't know what the cost associated with that will be yet. We'll reach out to Dr. Spire. He does it for the county. Uh, he's also the medical director for Rogersville Fire Department. And so, I'll get all of that information, take it to the nine-one-one board. And then based on what the nine-one-one board advise is bringing back to, to you. I think that's all I have for today.
You'll have a little break.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. That's good, thank you.
Okay, that will bring us to, who?
Chris.
Chris.
Mr. Chairman, as of last week, uh, Florence confirmed payment, or confirmed the, uh, arranging to make their monthly payments like all the other research counties amount called, uh, tax. So, the current payment and going forward now has been laid to rest. Like your permission to start talking to each municipality's lawyer, uh, to discuss a re-age. One, to come to an agreement about what each individual municipality's re-age figure is. And two, to do like we've done with Florence, which is to invite, uh, either a conversation or if they have an alternative, whatever they have in mind, start the conversation. None, none of the lawyers have any authorities, obviously, to make final decisions. And if the different municipalities through their mayors or whomever contact you individually to discuss how to pay their re-ages back. Right, that's outstanding. But at least with their other lawyers, we can do what we've done with the current payment, which is keep the conversation going and trying to get each municipality completely, um, on the ground as far as both current and re-age. Now, obviously, the largest re-age in the issue is Florence. I'm not sure what, if any, impact, uh, Councilman Jordan's early retirement is having over there, but I would assume that it is having an effect on different issues possibly. I did text with Mr. Musgrove as he left town for his week's vacation. He has referred the issue to his outside litigation counsel as far as giving an opinion on their arguments about defenses, which would impact the negotiation of the payment amount, et cetera. And I've got Mr. Lockwood, our outside litigation counsel, gonna be, uh, having a meeting with me mid-week. He is in trial the first two to three days of the week. So, I'm hoping that by the first of next week, that we can hear what their argument was that I invited them. And then either, either they're willing to negotiate or not. Again, I, I don't know the impact of Georgia early resignation. Cause I know they're dealing with that about how to fill it, when to fill it, et cetera. So, on those issues, I'm moving forward. On the, uh, I've got all my information on litigation to report to the auditors. Even, uh, I got tickled at them a little bit. They sent the letter on June twelfth, wanted to report on June fourteenth. That's the difference between auditor and lawyer. But I've got all the information and, uh, credit to Mr. Van Arkin and our CRS claims representatives in Montgomery. Cause a lot of claims, gentlemen, I never see. I didn't notice if there was a claim filed. The claim oftentimes never goes to litigation, but it's sent to our adjusters who deal with the claimant and or refer it to outside insurance. That's what you pay insurance rates for. I never see it. So, I don't know what to tell the auditors, but they were very kind. They sent it to their, uh, claims division and gave us a good report on what they had. And I'm gonna staple to my, uh, uh, report about the cases that I do work on. They usually only bring me in on cases that they know are going to litigation and they need local help. They need my advice. A lot of times, they know that they're never gonna get to that stage. But with all of this now, it can be in the mail to the auditors tomorrow. And we've fulfilled our, our responsibility litigation-wise. Then, on the vacation that was brought to our, uh, excuse me, not vacation, the renaming of some roads in an honorary way by the Coger family. If you can recall, that was brought to y'all at the last meeting. I'll let, uh, Eric speak to it. From an engineering point of view, he really has no problem with it. The application speaks for itself. So, if you tell me to go forward with the process, then I'll get with Brenda and schedule a public hearing. And, uh, they're gonna be put on notice of their requirements to pay for the sign, installation, et cetera. Basically, I'm looking to you to, whether to go forward with the next step or not. Not, not committing to approval or disapproval, but your next step was to be, have a public hearing. That's a reasonable schedule. And we'll do it just like we did the last. I, um, and I'm not fussed at Mr. Hill or the architect, because I understand after he sat me down and told me about this expansion, I mean, it kind of blew my mind a bit. I was, and then I'm very excited about it, because, I mean, you just don't wake up every day at TBA, say, here's nine, eight, nine million dollars worth of stuff that you can train these kids on. But I can't give a legal opinion on something that major without the information. And we called John Monday and we called him last Friday and he, uh, cause I thought he was gonna come meet with me, give me the, show me the figures. But he's, uh, he's trying to hustle that up. And when he does, he's gonna come sit down with me to, uh, explain to me, because if you get outside those percentages on change orders, I've got, I mean, I can't just spin it out of thin air. I gotta have something to hang my hat on. I understand the logic behind it. I understand that, that it's more than likely the right thing to do. But to give a legal opinion in writing, I gotta have that information. And I know he's not sitting on it. He's trying to get to, he's, he's trying, a lot of moving pieces he's trying to, uh, but I'm hoping to hear that from him this week. And, and if, and if I hear what I need to hear and I find that I can legally and ethically give the opinion, I won't leave here without dictating it to a leisure, on letter here. So, I think. I think that's all I got.
Time for a break. Brenda will be next, but we'll let the department get us going. Tom?
Hey, Brad, you can come up here a minute. Hey, here.
Will this have to have a revision?
The farm head part of it.
Will, will this have to have a revision to do the work at First Creek Park?
No. You just have to get an appeal. It's not over the, it's not over the due amount.
Okay, well, I'm, I'm, I'm certainly okay with that. They won't interfere with our tampering with the major, I understood, down there. Because it's pretty much out of the way. So, if this is something I'd like to move forward with. And, uh, the other commissioners, y'all okay with this? And I know Joe said he was, so. Thank you, Tom.
I'm good. Before Brenda starts, I'm gonna be, RSPP dinner. Use a cross point. It's, it's on July the eighteenth. This is gonna be the first one I've, uh, missed, but I can't make this one. Who wants to speak? I'm gonna speak at my spot.
I'm not gonna.
It's gonna be welcome to, uh, City of Florence and welcome to County Commission. That's what I used to do. The, uh.
You should've got a letter.
RSPP.
I ain't got that.
Well, I swear I'm at, I'm out of town.
I gotta burn, remember, I'm out of town.
I see where this is headed right quick, like. You see that? Let me check the date. I don't even know the date.
Honestly, that you have is scary. I can't.
I'll come go in and be there.
Well, I can do, I can do it for you. Y'all, that was gonna be just fifteen hundred.
Yeah, yeah, if you wanna go there.
I mean, it's, I would, it's just welcome.
Cause years ago, everybody.
Me and Stephanie, I, we're planning on going. We always, I mean, it's just welcome. Yeah, I'm not gonna give a speech or anything. I think I can handle this.
That's the first one I've missed since I've been on commission, but I can't make.
You should've got a letter. If you didn't, you're supposed to RSPP it back. If you're not going, I'll make sure he knows.
I already got a letter.
Okay.
You and Brenda can work that.
I'll get with Brenda, that's fine.
Okay, Brenda.
I'm gonna skip down to number two. Mr. Garner asked us to check on paying for Todd Nix's travel.
And he's, y'all, we don't have to deal with that? He said, he said he couldn't go?
Well, y'all have to do a resolution if y'all gonna send him.
Yeah, no, he, he did, he said he didn't wanna go.
Okay, so, we'll work through that. And then, uh, Rob Carney's coming to the work session in July. That's next Monday. He wants to talk about the Lauderdale County Convention and Bid Fisters Bureau. And then, um, we, it's time for the new legislative committee nominee for twenty-four, twenty-five piece hours now. Is it that you, Mr. Hackworth?
For what, man?
For the legislative committee, or is it Mr. Pettis? Do you wanna keep that or?
I don't mind though.
Yeah, okay, so.
Usually around October.
I'll put it, we have to do another nominee and send him a letter, so.
Another name is Pettis.
Okay, that's fine. I'll just, I'll redo it, it's no problem. And then, uh, I didn't know if you wanted, we passed, we got the resolution and the agenda for this, for today, for the, uh, nine-one-one board, but I didn't know if y'all wanted to go ahead and appoint the people to be in those positions, or do you wanna wait?
Well, we just need Joe to name who he, or he can personally be on.
I didn't catch y'all, you talking about the nine-one-one.
Nine-one-one board to represent it in the sheriff's department.
Well, I've never heard the outcome.
Okay, we're gonna, you'll, you'll need to be on it or appoint somebody.
Own it or appoint.
On the board, yeah.
So, can you think, you think you can be on it? We can put you down this time.
When, when does it say that? When do we review every?
Well, there's somebody else that really don't have the, there's a Tom on there. We used to have.
I mean, I'd probably like to be on it the first go around. And then, when it comes to re-appointed, I may appoint someone in my place. You want the ability to appoint somebody though, right? You or your appointee? We might just need to change. Let me look it up. So, I'll just tell them, Joe, about that.
Well, we'll have to do the resolution. All we have to do is he can, he can sit down any time he wants to be off the board. If we just put somebody else, we don't have to change that.
What we do to commissioners and sheriffs?
No, it's.
To duly elected.
Volunteer Department, Sheriff Department.
The mayor or the?
You're staying on Joe. And yeah, they need the chairman and the mayor swapping it.
Yeah.
Yeah, the mayor swapping, he's going first.
And he's going first.
So.
How it reads right now is to duly elected sheriff of Lauderdale County. Both can put the appointment or the appointment.
Elected sheriff or his appointees.
We, we wouldn't worry about that. We, you can take that on, we can, we can put it on there, cause I'd have to redo a contract. But we just need to know that the volunteer person's gonna be, isn't that right?
That's good, that's, that's good there.
Yeah, the second one. And you get, either theirs is the second one. So, if they don't own it, they need to have the option to appoint, we think.
Yeah.
Instead of, you're just having to be him, he can be too.
Well, we'll have to go back. We won't be able to pass that resolution tonight, because the city's already passed. We won't be able to pass.
That's what, uh. Well, do we appoint him or they? They do.
Here's, here's that.
Who's they? Who's they, what are y'all talking about? Oh, so we don't have that person, so we can't put those names down there anyway?
No, not yet.
And if you're wanting to rewrite it, we can't do that tonight anyway, so we'll have to redo the, the resolution.
And all it is, is just, it can be his, him or his appointment, it's what we.
Yeah, we don't have, you don't have to have that actually written on the actual one.
Once that's reworded.
I'll just take that out of the agenda, though, that would be passed tonight, because you wanna change, you wanna change.
And they may.
Because the C.D. hasn't agreed to that.
That may be what they.
I put a word out.
Brenda recommendation, this is the week.
Yeah, yeah.
The C.D.'s already passed their part, so we'll have to be rewritten, and then re, the whole thing has to be redone, so, we, we'll take that out of the meeting tonight, I'll get her to pull it off the agenda tonight, and then y'all need to decide what you're gonna do about the insurance, let me know, that's all I got.
Thank you.
You'd like him?
Nope. Not unless I've got something for me.
Sounds like we're good to five o'clock.
All right, thank you.